Ministries, and if everyone would please silence their phones, cell phones at this time, and if you so choose, please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. May we bow our heads, please? Dear Heavenly Father, we coming for you today with hearts full of gratitude for the opportunity to gather here at this city council meeting. We ask for your wisdom and guidance to be with us as we deliberate on matters that affect our community. Grant us the strength to work together in harmony with respect, understanding for one another's perspectives. Help us to make decisions that are just and fair, that uplift and benefit all residents of our city. May your light shine upon us, illuminating the path towards progress, unity, and prosperity. Give us the courage to stand up for what is right and the compassion to listen with open hearts. Bless the leaders, officials, and residents of Beaumont, Texas with your grace and protection. May we always strive to create a city that reflects your love and compassion for all. We offer this prayer, in your holy name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the May I have roll call, please?
Mayor West.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Turner.
Present.
Councilmember Durio.
Present.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Felschaw.
Present.
Councilmember Samuel.
Present.
And Councilmember Neil.
Present.
Thank you.
All right, today we have four proclamations and one presentation, and in lieu of reading the proclamations, we will yield that time to allow everybody to come up and speak about their organizations and our event. And as always, you or and whoever is with you is welcome, is invited to come up and shake hands with the council and for the photograph. First, we have a proclamation recognizing the month of May as Building Safety Month. Accepting will be Demi England, Director of Planning and Community Development, Beau Hanson, Deputy Building Official, and Boyd Meyer, Building Official, Building Codes.
Guys, well done. We appreciate y'all.
All righty, y'all look right here in one, two, and three. Thank you, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. On behalf of the International Code Council, local architects, engineers, design professionals, our building officials, the fire department, plans examiners, tradespeople, and inspectors that devote time and effort year-round to ensure safe construction of our buildings in Beaumont, we accept this proclamation and thank council for leading and working with us to adopt the codes and enforce the latest building safety codes to increase our community's resilience. These adopted codes not only ensure safety of our citizens and first responders, but also positively impact our community. Here recently, administration received excellent ISO ratings, which heavily influence our community's insurance premiums. Our scores reflect Beaumont to be considered above average in the state of Texas. Beaumont is and aims to continue to be a leader in building safety, and we are grateful to have leaders such as yourselves standing alongside us to continue in this effort. Thank you all again for recognizing May 2024 as the month of building safety.
Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation declaring May 19th through the 25th, 2024, as National Travel and Tourism Week. Accepting will be Ms. Freddie Willard, Executive Director of the City of Beaumont Convention and Visitors Bureau and staff.
Thank you, guys, for what you do. Appreciate y'all. Bless you, guys. Appreciate y'all. Keep up the good work. God bless you, girl. Thank you so much. Did y'all leave anybody at the office to run the office? Who's minding the store? Everybody's here. Still got people.
Oh, come on now.
All righty, crew, look right here in one, two, and three. Perfect, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, council, for your continued support of the Beaumont Convention and Visitors Bureau, and we accept this proclamation. I just wanted to read a couple numbers to you so that you can see just how travel matters to not only the United States as a whole, but to our wonderful little city of Beaumont. Travel is an economic powerhouse for every state and destination across the country, with an economic output of $2.8 trillion, supporting 15 million American jobs. And here in Beaumont, the visitor spending of $3.62.5 million in Beaumont in 2023 played a significant role in strengthening our local economy, supporting 3.2,000 indirect jobs, and generating $31.3 million in tax revenue. That's quite impressive. So again, travel does matter. It helps our local economy, it boosts the economy, and it continues to help our city grow. So thanks again for your support, continued support. We're going to keep pushing forward and bringing more conventions to town and inviting more visitors as well overall. So thanks again for your support, and we're going to continue to, how should I put it, invite more groups to town, and hopefully it will impact the city overall in a great way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have a proclamation recognizing the month of May as National Teachers Appreciation Month. We are honoring the 2024 Teachers of the Year. The District Elementary Teacher of the Year is Sharita Titus of Callwood Elementary School, where the principal is Ms. Julie Corona. And the District Secondary Teacher of the Year is Ms. Emily Aguilar of Beaumont Early College High School. The principal is Ms. Melanie Ferris. And do we have anybody here to receive? Oh, yeah, there she is. Yeah. You can Yeah. Congratulations. In the midst of a busy week.
Somehow, somewheres.
All righty, y'all look right here in one, two, and three. Wow, thank you, thank you.
Hello, everyone. We would like to say thank you so very much. On my way in, Dr. Shannon Allen, our superintendent, asked me how my day was, which, what an honor to be asked by the superintendent on a Tuesday, how my day is as a teacher. But truly, every day is a great day teaching in Beaumont Independent School District. We are very passionate about making every moment matter and preparing the next generation. I work at Beaumont Early College under the supervision of Principal Melanie Ferris, and we are wrapping up the year. We're moving and grooving, and we're already planning for next school year.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sharita Titus. I am the District's Elementary Teacher of the Year. First, I just want to thank all of you here in city council for the marvelous work that you're doing here in our community, also for supporting our district and helping to create solutions for our students to become better, to thrive, to be equipped for the world that they're getting ready to embark on here in the near future. My fearless leader is Ms. Julie Corona, who's here with me today. I'm at Callwood Elementary. And like my sweet sister here said, we are gearing up for the end of the school year. We are passionate about what we do. We are not just building children intellectually, but we are also building their character. And so to me, that's where the work is. You can teach a child to have all the knowledge in the world, but if their character doesn't align with that, then what are we creating? And so as a teacher, that's what we strive to do. We don't just get to the mind, but we get to the heart. And so I just want to thank you again, Mayor West. Thank you for allowing us, my school, to come into the city and for my students to be able to see what happens in here, because truly, we are developing leaders. Thank all of you.
And the last proclamation is recognizing the month of May as Jewish American History Month, and accepting will be Councilman Mike Getz.
It's good. Good on Mike. Take a picture with him?
All righty, y'all look right here in one, two, and three. Thank you.
Cynthia Wolf, our president of the Congregation Temple Emmanuel, had a conflict and could not be here today, so she asked that I accept this proclamation. And I want to thank the city for recognizing the month of May as Jewish American History Month. Since the very beginnings of our country, Jewish Americans, which only comprise 2.5% of the American population, have contributed an outsized measure to our commerce, our medical communities, our science, our sports, our entertainment industry. It's just amazing if you look at all the accomplishments that Jewish Americans have been able to contribute through the years for just such a small number of people. The Jewish people of America are currently facing some serious challenges. Anti-Semitism is at levels that we may not have seen since the Holocaust back in World War II. We're going to have a speaker come in from the Anti-Defamation League next month. The public will be invited to that. I think it's going to be on June 23rd. It's called a Words to Action Seminar. It's going to allow people to understand what anti-Semitism is and ways to combat it. But in the meantime, thank you for this proclamation recognizing Jewish American History Month.
And now we have a presentation by our City of Beaumont Communication Update, Lauren.
Good afternoon. We're excited to be back with the announcements for the week of May 21st. As you just heard, it's National Travel and Tourism Week, and the CVB has a stacked calendar of events around town, unveiling new Beaumontster mascots and highlighting the area attractions. Visit beaumontcvb.com/nttw for the full schedule and details. The Office of Emergency Management is asking any individuals or businesses who sustained any damages to their properties due to the storms to self-report it at damage.tdem.texas.gov. The Parks Department is still looking for volunteers to help plant 400 trees at Terrell Park on June 1st. Sign up as an individual, family, or group at beaumonttexas.gov/growbmt and help grow Bo with us. If you want to get a jump on fall, registration is open for Beaumont Recreation's Youth Coed Flag Football League. Sign up by June 2nd for the season, which runs September 7th through October 19th, for boys and girls ages 7 to 14. Volunteer coaches and refs are also needed, and you can contact the Sterling Pruitt Center for more information or register online at teamsideline.com/baumont. And save the date for the city's Juneteenth celebration, which is happening on Saturday, June 15th, from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. Get ready for a spectacular musical lineup, cultural performances, and community engagement as we honor the history and significance of Juneteenth. Beaumont Events has a stacked calendar for summer fun, starting with Go Skate Day on June 22nd, a Sundown Concert on July 11th, and Jazz at the Lake on August 8th. Be sure to follow them on Facebook to stay up to date with everything going on in the city. And as we know, it's starting to get hot around here, but the city has plenty of places to cool off. The two pools and 10 splash pads are open seasonally from Memorial Day through Labor Day. Check out our website to find the closest location to you. And a friendly reminder that the second budget workshop is happening this Thursday right here at 1:30 p.m. And another friendly reminder that the city will be closed Monday, May 27th for Memorial Day. Thank you.
Thank you. And for those that are here for proclamations and are the presentation, now would be the time to leave, so feel free to do so, and we thank you for coming. And I understand Henry R. Smith is in the house, and he is a world-renowned artist, so we thank you for being here today.
Appreciate you.
Now is the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. You may make public comments on the consent agenda or regular agenda items, 1 through 3, and 5, or any other topic. Item 4 has already been heard in public hearings, therefore citizens cannot speak on that. The city clerk will call your name when it's your time to speak. When you approach the podium, please say your address, city, and state. You will have three minutes for public comment. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up. Please be reminded that myself, our council, cannot respond whenever you're making comments, but someone from our office will contact you.
Larry, and I think it's, I don't want to mispronounce the last name, Beade? I'm sorry?
Be right.
Okay.
Where the councilmen, city councils. My name is Larry B. Wright. I stay at 9465 Meadowbin Drive, Beaumont, Texas, 77706. This is my first time coming to a city council meeting, and this is my first time making comments, but I have an issue that's going on in my neighborhood that I would like the council to consider and address if they can. So what it is, is that my neighborhood from Meadow Lane, Meadow Lane, and Spring Meadow, they both have natural gas hookups. Now, the section where I stay at is in the middle of these two streets. And all of the houses in my section is all natural, I mean, it's all electrical. What I'm asking for is the city council to address this issue, and if you can, please contact the utilities companies to see what can be done about this, because the reason why I'm here is that I have been using my generator for years, and now I'm getting too old to be hauling gas back and forth in case of an emergency. Sometimes you may not find gas, but I'd just like to know if the city council would address this issue. And then one other little thing, when I was sitting on the bench, if I don't go over outside, when I got up to come into the city council chambers, I stumbled. It was a little on the sidewalk out there. It was just a little slight increase in the pavement. And I just want the city council to be aware of this, because it is an accident issue. And so, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Melissa Bradford.
I'm going to refrain from saying my complete address due to safety concerns, and I want to thank you, Mayor, for scheduling that meeting with me in February to discuss those safety concerns. I know I'm only allowed so many minutes, so I'm going to get right to the chase.
Yeah.
Now, what you gonna have to file, Norman?
Okay, check this out. You know, I'm going over your documents and stuff, right?
Yeah.
I'm like, hold on. Something ain't right about this shit.
Hold on, let me turn my TV down. Hold on. Ain't too long, got it. Yeah.
I'm like, I'm looking at a phone over, and I said, okay, I'm a draft motion for reconsideration, all right?
Yeah.
But then I'm looking at it, and I'm saying, hold on. Something ain't right, but I don't feel right. And then I looked at it. You filed a motion. You filed this motion with the district judge, with the district court, okay? Now, that motion supposed to be forwarded to Trap, all right, which is the second administrative judge, all right? Trap supposed to take that motion and assign another judge over that case. But the district judge forged Trap's name. And then in the last of your order, he told the clerk, stupid, tell the clerk to send a copy to Trap. Now, why would Trap send a copy to himself if he didn't want to draft the document? No, he didn't. The judge, the district judge, the district judge made that decision and put Trap's name on it.
Let's stop it right there. That recording is between myself and the legal aid person that was assisting me with my case. And he also did a sworn affidavit, David. This forged document from that judge, I'm not allowed to say his name, stating that the administrative judge whom I motioned to transfer or motioned to recuse and disqualify, the 136 judge did not get sent to his office. That was already documented before we met with the administrative judge on that same day. The same day we exposed him, he finally released $9,708 of my stolen funds of $46,000. This money was paid to me and my mortgage company to repair my damaged property. Four years, they've been withholding my money in the court registry illegally. Now, the community has been raving and raving about this also and posting on social media on my behalf, because I'm constantly being ignored by the commissioner courts.
Thank you.
Daniel Jeans.
Good afternoon, council. Glad to be here. Daniel Jeans with the HOW Center, 2519 Cable Avenue. Just wanted to invite everybody to our groundbreaking ceremony. Thank you for your continued support through the years, hard work and dedication, and above all God. Been a long journey. It's been something we've been working on for 15 years. Appreciate our council member getting behind us, the mayor, and all the different council members. It's not going to be a fancy affair, because we're not fancy, but we are going to try to take some pictures and just recognize and let the people know that God is good. And we really appreciate being part of the little north in the community we're in. Starts at 11 o'clock, and we'd love to see everybody out there.
Thank you, Mr. Hal.
Addie Allen.
Good afternoon. Addie Allen, 9695, Gross, Beaumont, 77707. I've come before you multiple times stating 911 was called regarding my six-foot fence with padlock, and that fence was jumped. My doorbell nor a knock was initiated at my door. Lesson learned. A notarized trespassing affidavit from the police department means nothing in my neighborhood. I've learned that witnesses mean nothing as well. The responding officer with badge privilege disregarded my presence when he stepped out of his car. The man in the white truck in front of my driveway was allowed to interfere and speak with him first. I'm sure his name did not match my called name to 911. The officer spoke with me last, disregarding I made the call. He asked what was going on, and I did reply, "Come with me in the back, and I'll show you my six-foot fence that was jumped." It's unfortunate that the open records request has not been completed. The second one as well. Asked to speak with him, I asked to speak with the boss of Supercenter, and he said that he had sent his employee home, so that means that the guy that jumped my fence was, he just left. I was told by the records department, April 16th, that an attorney statement was needed from Attorney General in order for me to get a narrative, because I did give all of you a copy of the incident report with nothing on it. It's unfortunate that the supervisor and all individuals in the police department found it unnecessary to provide a written account of what the final report should have said. It's unfortunate that there are damages that the city attorney said there were none. The side of my generac has been a hole boring, and my fence is damaged, and I'm a little upset still. But it's unfortunate to call 911 officers that responds, and the jumper gets nothing, not even a citation, not even a warning. It's unfortunate that the records clerk at the police department did not advise the legal attorney that I was not interested in anything going to the state attorney general. So my input doesn't matter, because he would have gotten a one-sided view. It is transparent that crime has been committed, and if I don't faint or falter, I'll reap the benefit. Thank you for serving, councilman.
Thank you.
William Shackelford.
Good afternoon, Mayor Council. My name is William Shackelford. I live at 385 Manning Street, Beaumont, Texas. I've been here a little bit over three years now, and I have noticed some things that I've been here a little bit over three years now and I have noticed some things that have drawn my concerns. Number one, we need some help on the north end, just a little bit, not much. I know it takes time to do anything. I do know that, but just a little bit of help will help. And one of my concern is that I'm not familiar with the BOW program. And there's a few homes on my block. They know, they shotgun houses. They was damaged during Harvey. And so therefore, it don't take but a pickup truck and a trailer to knock down these houses. You don't need a whole lot. That would better our community. I am active in the community and I will be active in the community and know some of my concerns. As we go on with this, trying to help our community, I just want to play a part and I do play a part. Another one of my concern is lawn care. The lawn care guys that take care of the lawns, take care of the property, they blow all the grass in the street. And if you would drive the neighborhood, you would see clunks of grass in the street. This called drainage problems, you know, when it rains, especially hard as it rains in this day and time. I don't know if we have any kind of order that we can adopt to start penalizing some of these people. You know, we had code enforcements out here. I don't know how much authority they have or how much they can do, but at least we can, you know, start letting these property owners know that this is a problem. And some of this is caused by flooding, a lot of flooding. And so I just wish we would kind of look into that. Loud music in automobiles. I know there's not a whole lot you can do about it, but 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 o'clock in the morning is rallying the house. And I know we all have this problem sometime in all communities. I know there's so much you can do about it, but I'm just asking that start finding some of these people. We need to adopt some orders. We really truly do. I don't know if we send an order in the place right now or not, but these are some of the things that we possibly need to look into. Beaumont is a good city to live.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
William Johnson.
Good morning, council. Mr. Mayor, council, my name is William Johnson. I live at 1045 Madison Street and my complaint is still against my bank. On the 2nd and the 6th of 2024, I went to my bank, as I usually do on the first of the month, to take care of my little banking. I walked in the bank and the bank, the president of the bank stopped me when I was going to the front desk to withdraw a little money out of my account. I found out that my account wasn't nothing in it to withdraw. It seemed as though someone had went to Chase Bank out on feeling and called college and took, made a check out for $700. This is at the walk-in. I do all my banking through the walk-in, just walk in and walk up to the counter and the ladies usually take care of me. A $700 check was taken out on the 25th. A $900 check was taken out on the 1st and the 30th. What did I do? I talked to the bank president. She let me know right off hand, go to the police department. I asked her about the camera system that they got, all cameras all over the place, could I see? No, go to the police. I went to the police. I called, got two different police numbers and I called them. The only really help that I got from the police is with this officer y'all got working outside the door. After I came in here and spoke to y'all one day, he caught me outside and he called, he called across town to some, to the other police department. From that, I got a statement. I went to the bank that month and nothing was put in. I went to the bank this past month and I seen where a $700 check had been deposited, a $700 had been deposited to my account. I'm still lacking $900. That's why I'm here today. I had a check for $700 taken out on the 25th. I had $900 taken out of my account on the 30th and I'm still looking for the $900 check. I just wanted to bring that to y'all's attention and I wanted to thank the officer outside for directing me. That's all I have to say. I'm still looking for my money.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a motion in a second for approval of the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion in a second of approval of the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Councilman Turner?
Yes, sir. Mr. Manager or Staff, item D, I see we have 4,606 items that need replacing with our antennas, either replacing, repairing, or reprogramming. It came in 12,000 under budget, but do we have like scheduled routine maintenance to kind of address that or is this something that's already in existence? I'm just kind of concerned with that number being so large.
Yes, routine maintenance should have been in place. I cannot answer that question, but routine maintenance should have been in place. However, I believe due to like some staffing issues, we got behind and it has snowballed to the point that we're at now where we're gonna have to just blanketly cover the whole city. But the, Mr. Downs does have a plan in place that the maintenance is going to begin again and so we should not have this problem again.
Okay, yeah, that was one of my biggest concerns with the number that large, you know, just routine maintenance if we're actually already having it in place. And if we don't, what are we gonna do to get it there so we don't have to look at a number this large in the future? Thank you.
Councilman Durio, then Councilman Getz.
So with these meters or antennas being replaced, did it have anything to do with the water billing problems that we've been having lately?
No, that has nothing to do with it.
Misreading or anything like that?
It could, it could possibly have to do with misreading, if there's been misreading because staff is having to go out and manually read because their antennas are not responding back to the system.
Are we still charging customers for these damaged antennas? At one time they were charging them if they was damaged, they was charging them like $146.
Yep, that's right.
$145.
We have that in place. We'll do that.
So are they, is like if this is the first time this happened to somebody, we're charging them?
We'll waive it.
We'll waive it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilman Getz.
I've got some concerns about this. I remember when Johnson Controls came to the city and sold us on a multimillion-dollar package to put this very sophisticated system into place. Prior to that time, all of our meters were mechanical in nature, is that right?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
We were told that we were losing revenue because the mechanical meters were, would become obsolete or defective in some way. And we were told that this was the greatest whiz-bang thing to do. I don't think we were told that you're gonna be looking at spending a half a million dollars within 10 years of implementation of that system. What's, what's going on here? What kind of, what kind of warranty do they have? What kind of guarantee did they have when they sold us this system?
I believe the endpoints have a 10-year warranty on them. So some of it could be warranty repair. We're just at the point now where we don't have the manpower to actually go out and change them because we're having to read so many meters each month. Once this has, once this has been corrected, we're gonna reallocate our meter readers to do maintenance every month. So if they're, if cycle one's being billed, they're not gonna be out maintenance in cycle one. So every month will be, stay on top of it.
And the price is, 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 I mean, the company has done their best to give us an estimate for budget. We won't actually know how much it's gonna cost until we get out there. I mean, we may come across some that can be warranty replaced. We may come across, it was more of, we had a low end, a middle end, and a large end and we picked the middle end to budget for. So that was an estimate of this is how many are not reading, this is what it could cost. As stated in the agenda memo, we won't really know how much it'll cost until we get out there.
Well, I guess, you know, part of the big selling point of going to this automatic, automated meter reading was that we're gonna appreciate a big cost savings because you're not going to have to have your meter readers go individually. They'll just drive by on the street and they'll have their little device that'll communicate with the antenna and it'll tell you how much water usage. Is that how it's supposed to work?
Once everything's working, they don't even have to go out. Everything's through repeaters, collectors, and then it sends the signal back to the servers and we build that way. We're never gonna be 100% reading because of, you know, damaged endpoints, cut cables, things like that. But that's, that's the goal is to get back up there so we don't have all these people going out each month.
Okay.
Councilman Neal, Councilman Felschall.
So you said you're gonna waive the fee on the damaged ones or you would waive it, but you're gonna waive it before you send the bill to the customer, right?
We won't, we won't, we haven't been billing the customer the first charge. But we do want them to know about it though so that they're aware and, you know, that there could be possible billing in the future.
Okay. Well, I mean, I just want to make sure when, when one of these is getting worn out, there's only a 10-year lifecycle on it, the customer shouldn't be billed for that.
We're not billing that. We're billing when there's damage, like cut cables, the antennas on the top, got ran over with a lawnmower, things like that.
Thank you.
Councilman Felschall. Thank you. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number one, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Council consider a resolution authorizing the purchase of two Pentaer Hydromatic pumps and a new Carrier Assembly Railings System at the Long Street Lift Station. And this comes with a recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number one?
Move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion in a second for item number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number one, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number two, please?
Council consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to award a contract to C-Tex Construction Corp. of Beaumont for the Forsyth Drainage Improvements Project and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number two?
Second.
There is a motion in a second for approval of item number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number two, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number three, please?
Council consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number three to the contract with the OCO LLC for the street rehabilitation citywide Phase Five rebid project and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number three?
Move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion in a second for approval of item number three. Is there any discussion? Councilman Getz.
Bart, can you tell us a little bit about what's going on out there that this type of expenditure needs to be made?
Yes, sir. When we bid this project initially, we put an additive item into the bid for the roads at the wastewater treatment plant because they're simply end of life and need to be rehabbed. We had previously bid them as a separate project and the bids were far exceeding what we, we thought they should have cost. So we went ahead and included it in the street rehab contract this time around. However, we were unsure of the water revenue bonds and when they were going out. So at the time we awarded the street rehab contract, we didn't award the additive item for the roads at the wastewater treatment plant at that time. But now that we've resolved the timing on when those water revenue bonds are going out, we're putting a change order in, awarding it. The amount of this is the same that they bid at the time the contract went out.
So what type of roads are these and how much vehicular traffic do they get? What, what kind of condition are they in?
They're asphalt surface roads and they've just worn out over time. We've done construction out there. We've had flooding out there, as you know, and, and they've just worn out. You get a lot of heavy truck traffic through there at times, plus some light traffic.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor of approving item number three, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number four, please?
Council consider a request to abandon a portion of Stewart, Leiper, Verone, and Lamar Street rights away. And at a joint public hearing held on April 15, 2024, the planning commission recommended 5.0 to approve the request with the following conditions. One, drainage easement shall be retained on Verone, Stewart, and Lamar Streets to maintain all existing storm sewer infrastructure. Two, proposed senators sewer plants must receive approval, approval from the city of Beaumont Water Utilities Department. Three, proposed relocation of fire hydrants must receive approval from the city of Beaumont Fire Department. And four, any street lights within abandoned area shall convert to private security lights within a private property upon approval of the, of the abandonment. Security lighting is optional and therefore billing for continued usage shall be transferred to the owner or the light shall be removed.
Is there a motion for item number four?
Move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion in a second for approval of item number four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number four, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, would you please read the notice for the public hearing?
Council conduct a public hearing to receive comments on the public services and public facilities and improvements, line items of the consolidated grant programs, 2024 Annual Action Plan, and consider approving a resolution adopting the 2023 Annual Action Plan. It comes with the recommendation to conduct a public hearing and approve the resolution.
Okay, the public hearing is now open. And Mr. City Clerk, do we have any? Okay, at this time we'll close the discussion for the public hearing. And Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number five, please?
Council consider approving a resolution adopting the 2024 Annual Action Plan and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number five?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion in a second for approval of item number five. Is there any discussion? Councilman Turner?
Yes, Mr. Manager. One of my concerns is similar to what the gentleman, Mr. Will, came up and spoke about earlier with the vacant homes and round down homes that are kind of left in some of our older parts of town. I know we have a CHODO program and to my understanding, we've really been operating with one CHODO. What I can do is I would like to compliment Jess on her productivity with our CDBG funding because I've seen it almost triple since I've been on council on a number of applicants. But with this TRODO program, it's basically funding that can go to fixing up these low to moderate income houses in some of these older areas. It's targeted for that. I just would like to see us take a more aggressive approach on getting more TRODO partners. I know the partner we have is doing a great job, but I think we could be a lot more I know the partner we have is doing a great job, but I think we could be a lot more productive, specifically in the older parts of town, if we had additional partners. So I'd just like to see a more of aggressive approach when it comes to that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving item number five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. At the close of city council meeting, the council will hold an executive session to consider matters related to contemplated or pending litigation in accordance with section five five one dot oh seven one of the government code, the claim of Donette Meekins, charge number four six zero dash two zero two three dash zero three two zero one. Uh, at this point, we're going to have, uh, council member comments. And I will start with council, is that Councilman Neal down there without the beard?
Comment, Mayor. It was an accident.
Councilman Samuel? Councilman Felschall?
Congratulations to June Ellis for his recognition and honor from T M L. You make Beaumont proud, thank you.
Okay, June. Congrats, man.
Turner?
Uh, just want to do a second shout out to Henry R. Smith, man. It's good to see you in the building, man. I'm proud of what you're doing and putting on for the City of Beaumont. Seeing you do art all over the United States is pretty impressive, man. I'm glad that you're down in the crowd, staying the whole meeting, seeing what's going on. Much respect. Uh, another shout out to, uh, Ms. Catherine Campbell, who's over the North End Neighborhood Association. She's in attendance today. I know the gentleman came earlier. You live in the North End, so hopefully y'all can connect prior to, prior to the meeting being over. I'd like to congratulate all our graduates, uh, who graduated from high school. I'd like to see all our young people from the City of Beaumont go out and be successful and accomplish whatever you think you can accomplish. And just similar to some of the people that came to the podium, I, I thankful that we did help the gentleman who had an issue with his bank. But I, I see he's still back. So anything we can do to help him and anybody else that came to the podium, I, I appreciate a, a follow-up report.
And I can say this in my comments, but, um, unfortunately there are tons of scams that target, um, the elderly and, um, and the older generation. Um, there are tons of promos and education that they put out to kind of prevent that. I don't know if this gentleman was actually a product of that, but I know our police officers did investigate and they worked really hard on that case. Um, and there's just not a lot you can do in some of these fraud cases. So, um, for those of you who are watching at home and for those of you in the audience, definitely check on your older neighbors, your, your grandparents and your parents and make sure that you're monitoring their accounts, um, that their passwords are secure, um, that their banking information is safe, not leaving your statements in your mailbox, um, getting e-statements if you can, um, and be, being careful about where you leave your checkbook. If you have people who come over for home health and stuff like that, it's extremely important. So it's an unfortunate situation, but just know that our officers did do all that they could to help resolve the issue.
Okay. Uh, I appreciate that. Uh, I just wanted to make sure we were at least addressing it. I know our staff has been. I just wanted to get an update to kind of see where we at. And he did come in, recognize that the officers did assist and do a good job. So I appreciate that as well to our Beaumont Police Department. Thank you.
Councilman Getz?
I want to congratulate the Lamar University Men's Baseball Team for winning the Southland Conference outright and getting the number one seed in the tournament, which begins tomorrow, and wish them well as they try to get to Omaha to the College World Series.
Thank you. Councilman Durio?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to, uh, wish a happy birthday to my, my best friend, my wife, Gwen, or like I like to call her, my Gwinnie Pooh, uh, to tell her happy birthday. Uh, and also, uh, congratulations to our employees, Building Codes and C V B for their proclamations. Also, the, uh, B I S D Teachers of the Year, congratulations to them also. Also, I want to know, we, we do have, uh, or do we have codes, um, as far as when you're cutting the grass and blowing the grass out on the street?
That's an environmental issue and yes, we do have that. Um, it's kind of one of those things where you have to kind of catch them in the act in order to write the ticket, so.
Call three one one?
Yes, sir.
If we see that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And also to the grads also, and also, uh, I know some of our high school graduates are graduating from high school with an associate's degree. And that's awesome and congratulate, they, they're, they're ready to go to work. So that's awesome and that's all I have, Mayor.
All right, Councilman Samuel?
Yes, Mayor. I, uh, I heard something last night. I didn't hear the full story, but, uh, I think Lamar University Athletic Department received recognition for being, uh, one of the, not just one sport, but the, uh, premier, uh, summer award for the conference. Uh, I think that's something.
They won the Commissioner's Cup, which meant that they had the overall best sports program in the conference, pretty much.
Thank you. Yes, yes. I, I, I thought that was worthy of being, I didn't know the specifics of it. I heard it late last night, but, uh, that means the entire program, uh, athletic program, men, women, uh, football, basketball, track, golf, uh, tops in the conference. Uh, yes.
Yes, sir.
And some report back so we can give some recognition to them later.
Sounds good. Madam City Attorney?
Yes. So just briefly, um, just because this item has come before council several times, um, my office did provide counsel independent report, um, but just for the sake of, just so we all know that our officers don't ignore things and we take the safety of our citizens very seriously. Um, our officer arrived on scene at Ms. Allen's home and spent approximately twenty-two minutes there. Um, he did engage with the generic employee first for less than two minutes, um, because he was at the end of the driveway. Um, when he, Ms. Allen approached, he then spoke, started speaking with her. There was less than, uh, a minute and a half between when he spoke with the generic employee and spoke with Ms. Allen. He's with the remainder of the call, speaking with her. At one point, um, during the call, um, he asked her was the property that they retrieved, their property, and she didn't admit to yet. At no time did she mention any damage to her fence and that's why that's not included in the report, um, at least on that, on that call. Um, Ms. Allen did do an open records request on April eighteenth. On April nineteenth, our office reached out. Um, she did that with the police department. They reached out and asked for clarification. Um, she didn't respond upon her coming to council on the second time. In the May, first May meeting, I directed them to send her a letter on May ninth asking her if she was going to clarify or rescind. On April nineteenth, she said that she would be rescinding her request, but she did that verbally. It's been our practice that any rescension of an open records request has to be in writing. Um, so they did send a follow-up letter on May ninth asking if she was going to rescind or reassert or modify her open records request, um, and she has not responded. So there has not been a neglect on our part. Um, there may have been some miscommunication, but that, they did send it as an official letter and it has not been returned undeliberable, so we have to assume that it was received. And that's that on that. On Wednesday, um, May fifteenth, I had the privilege of hosting a hundred fifth graders from Sally Curtis who wanted to do a mock trial day. It was extremely exciting. They had some brilliant questions. They were amazing group. And so I just want to take a point of privilege to just thank, um, our district clerk, Jamie Smith, for his time, he spoke with the kids at the courthouse and explained how the filing of casework works. Um, we took them over to municipal court and they met with Judge Lively and Bree Tevado, um, who is our court administrator. Judge Lively, as you know, is our chief magistrate, as well as my prosecutor, um, Kelly Cobert. They spoke with them all about the inner workings of municipal court. Um, some of the students did have some concerns about why the fines were so high. No worries, I didn't, I told them that that was not a council responsibility, um, but they had some very, very good questions about that. And then also to Judge Naomi Doyle, who's our keynote speaker, who talked about, um, what it means to be a justice of the peace in the People's Court. Um, we ended the day doing a mock trial experiment on, um, I think their focus was Little Red Riding Hood and whether or not she committed any criminal charges. We divided them up into groups. One represented the prosecution, the other represented the defense, and they had some very creative strategies, um, on defending her and prosecuting her. I also want to just shout out to my staff. My staff is amazing. All of my staff pitched in to help, um, coordinate that effort, um, to make sure it was a, a great success for them. And then, uh, especially to the principal and the fifth grade administration at Sally Curtis for trust me with their babies all day. I had them from nine until two P M. Um, and it was a, like I said, it was a very good day, uh, but it was very exhausting. Have totally new respect for teachers. Um, they do a great job. Um, and so, yeah, and also I want to thank, uh, the city staff, um, events facilities for giving us the event center, setting that up, um, for the manager, for allowing us to do that, to host those kids, and for the council, for the vision for us, a partner with B I S C to have this experience for our kids. It was a great day. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our Public Works Director, Mr. Barco. Mr. Bean?
Mayor, real quick, I'd just like to echo what Councilman Turner had brought up about Chodos. For those who don't know, those are community housing development organizations. So those are nonprofit organizations that help to redevelop or develop new housing, especially for low, moderate income, uh, families. And so we, as mentioned, only have one. Many years ago, we used to have many and HUD likes us to have more. So you have a bit of a competition, you have a bit of resiliency. And we have, we've had, fortunate to have one we've worked with for many years, uh, but we'd always like to have more. So we would encourage those who might be interested to reach out to, um, Planning Community Development Department for more information about how to get certified, uh, as a Chodo. So, but that's all I had.
Thank you. Mr. Award Winner?
Just wanted to thank Jess Prince and her efforts to, um, bring the annual action plan here. I think she did a great job trying to find the, the funding to allocate to many services, uh, new and existing.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, Mayor. Uh, just like council to know that we respond to, when someone comes to the podium to speak, we, we, we respond to them. We make contact with them and, and work with them through their issues. So if that's not happening somewhere, we can do it. But contact is always made with someone in that respect. Uh, congratulations, the staff of Building Safety Month, them and her team. Congratulate them on what they've achieved out there. And likewise with the C V B for National Tourism, uh, Travel, uh, Week. Uh, recognize them. Uh, also the teachers, I'd like to congratulate the teachers that came here today. Teachers have a tremendous job. Um, you can see some of the passion in when they were speaking and went to their, uh, um, what was it?
Banquet.
Banquet. And just being able to meet some of those teachers and what they do for our community. I really commend them for their hard work out there. And, uh, that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Uh, I want to thank everybody for coming today. We had, uh, large attendance and that's always a good thing. And appreciate the people bringing, uh, their concerns. Uh, we have a new Beaumont Enterprise reporter, welcome to the scene here today. Uh, I want to remind people too about the summer heat. This is a good time. We talk about our institutions, we talk about our city, but it's the people that make up this city, that make up your neighborhoods, go into neighborhood associations. We need to be good neighbors, check on those that are elderly, those that are disabled, and just people in your neighborhood, especially as it gets hotter. Just pay attention to, uh, those around you. And the graduations which have been mentioned, had the privilege of attending, uh, and Westbrook's was Ford Park got full. They had to stop letting people in for a little bit and that had seven thousand capacity. So very impressive in terms of the attendance and in today's time where you hear so much negative about our youth and yet you've got a lot of people pouring into them and so many people showing up to celebrate them and their accomplishments. And, and certainly, uh, all the high schools and their graduations, uh, is very good and, and the, and the teachers' hard work. And Lamar University Commissioner's Cup, and we certainly need to acknowledge that as well from here. And with that, um, we now recess into the executive session.